So this made order, everyone please join us in the classroom.
Glad to be here today with God among the United States of America and to your mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time on last promotion approved of minutes for the February nineteenth, regular meeting, February twentieth is a special meeting.
So move.
Stack him.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Baker. Uh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, public comments, anyone sign an bill?
No sir.
Okay, under presentations and reports, we have Mr. Miller from the CTE program.
It's been about a year since I've been here with you guys. We've had a lot happen in that, uh, in the last year with, with CTE. Everything's been positive. Uh, before I actually start and go through all of, uh, what I want to share with you guys today. Uh, I have Mr. Jones and his welding students here, and they would like to present something other to the board.
Okay.
So, Jim?
We've got this, um, with our new CNC machine, we cut this out, and we'd like to present this to you to say thank you for donating money to the program for the CNC machine.
Thank you very much.
Where do you want me to set this up?
Here, I'll take it.
Looks good.
Yeah. Boy, she just had a big fly of WB on there. We're working on that, sir, huh? We're working on that.
We...
Why not wash them?
I'm buying that. It's aluminum.
Aluminum?
Yes, we can cut stainless, aluminum, carbon, anything. We have, uh, multiple, uh, things we can cut out. We can cut anything you think of by the machine.
Be careful what you say. They do, they do a good job, but it has lots of good stuff. And these guys are learning about CAD as well. Um, before we didn't have the, uh, the piece of equipment, so this would be something in conform program once they get out of here, they get into the workforce. Um, now they have an opportunity to, uh, pick up a few extra skills, uh, that we will help them once they get out and get a job. Is there a water jet, a cup of water?
No, it cuts with...
Beels?
Yeah.
Router type bit?
Yes, plasma arc.
Oh, okay. But it's a good one then.
Yes, it's a fifty-one thousand degree arc that cuts, uh, so quickly it doesn't leave any heat trace on the metal.
Wow.
Does it take you long to do one like that?
Probably, it can take a couple of minutes depending on what size you want.
That's deep.
They, they, they learn, you know, how to do things that overlap and, you know, they know what X and Y, and, well, we have Z in there too, so...
Why don't you make them and sell them?
We are doing that, uh, we're using it for donations for our program and for, uh, seals.
That's great.
Anybody else saying anything? Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Redford, Joe.
Thank you all. We just want to show our appreciation.
I got you. Good looking. We're ordering some new material today, so, yeah. But is, they, they have capabilities to do all kinds of things now. Uh, they just had to build their, with tinkering with, uh, little things. And they made me assign, uh, a, uh, on my driveway, and I told them, I said, "Well, you guys could make it out of a little bit thinner metal." And I think they used, I don't know, it was like three eights, it was heavy. I was like, "Oh, my goodness." They're like, "We wanted it to last." So they were just playing around with it, trying to figure out what they could do, the metals and so forth.
It's nice.
Yeah. That is. Uh, all right, I'll, I'll, uh, start through covering a bunch of things here. Uh, if you turn to the first page, you'll see that I have that title as visitors. And the reason I have that title of visitors is that it's over the last, since last time I came to talk, um, to the board, we've had a huge interest, um, from folks in Lincoln County High School because of our CTE program. Uh, when I talked with, uh, to you before, I told you we were on the verge of becoming a model school, uh, which we, we achieved that. Um, my goal is now is to move us to what's called a diamond school, and that's getting every program, uh, on board and, uh, and following, uh, certain criteria that's set forth by the Department of Ed. Uh, recently, we've had folks from the Kentucky Valley Education Committee. Uh, Nicole Stanley, she's from Wynn, she wanted to come and see simulated workplace. Um, the folks from Kentucky have emailed me and would like me to come down and do a, uh, presentation to, uh, their high school administrators on simulated workplace. Um, it's, um, I think it's around Hazard, Kentucky. I told the guy I'll get back with him. Uh, we had some folks from the Salem City School District came in May, they came back and seen us in September. Um, they love what we do, so they are modeling our CTE simulated workplace, um, now at the Salem City School District in, in Virginia. Appalachian Regional or, uh, Commission or, um, A R C, they came and visited. Uh, they have asked me to, uh, come to a national education conference in Florida, uh, in about a week to do a presentation on Lincoln County High School and our career take it, uh, things that we do and our kids. I've done a fantastic job talking to these folks. And I'm usually, I don't do a lot of talking with them when people come to visit us because it's not about me, it's about the kids, and they understand what we're trying to do with the simulated workplace. Um, and once they start talking, it, it, people just seem to fall in love with them. So I'm really, really impressed with them. Uh, Mountaineer Challenge came and visited with us. They, uh, had also expressed an interest to come and do a training for some of their folks on, uh, simulated workplace. I've had people from Wayne and Cavill, Mingo, Mason and Logan, Leesons County. I've worked out an agreement with Stan Watch Academy, and several of our kids have a, uh, a golden opportunity to, uh, learn about entrepreneurship and a business plan, and I'll talk more about that later.
Mike, that's on the agenda.
That is on the agenda, yes. I see you had Jessica and I on the agenda to go to Florida as well. Well, thank you guys for that. Um, the Department of Ed's came and seen us a number of times. Chris Miller from Dutch Millers, and I'll share a little bit about, uh, opportunities that we have there with them. Um, Angela Miller, she has no relation to me, but, um, she's with Apple Education, and, uh, they would like to do a, uh, hopefully investment in our kids, and I'll share a little bit of that with you coming up. And I spoke last week at the CTE conference, uh, on what we do in Lincoln County High School. Now I have folks from Preston County, Monroe, Ohio, and Kathleen Manally, which is with the S R E B, want to come and business, so we seem to be a hot topic for everybody. Uh, on the next page, um, our LC Auto, when I was talking a minute ago about meeting with Chris Miller, what I ended up, uh, being able to achieve out of this is that we have, uh, had the opportunity for a couple of our kids to interview. Uh, we had started an apprenticeship program with Dutch Millers. We have two of our students, William Waltus and Brad Aggins. They are, um, doing internship basically through the end of the school year, and hopefully this will lead them into a job. Um, Dutch Millers had eight positions that needed to be filled, so, uh, we had folks from Campbell County Career, Putnam County, um, different places, uh, Canal County, that applied. And, and I was real tickled that, you know, we had eight slots, but two of our students were selected. I mean, that, that's saying a lot. Um, those guys had, have been working and finished up their ASE certification test, uh, but they're also certified to do vehicle inspections, so they were pretty much, I guess, a shoe-in for, for what they wanted to do down there, and that's been exciting. The good thing on the outcome of this is that if these guys continue to work with them and they get a job offered at, at the end of the school year, um, Chris Miller's willing to buy them, uh, like a thousand dollars worth of tools to help get them started. So there's a, there's a little incentive for, for our guys in the end, and, and they actually love doing this.
Now, how did you get chosen to be?
They actually filled out an application and had to do a, uh, just a normal process like you would for, for any job. They, they did an interview, uh, and that's part of what, what we do with simulated workplaces, that the kids have to interview for their, their positions and, and, you know, apply for them, um, just like you would in the real world, and, and that's how they got chosen. Um, Adventure Group contacted me, they have a, uh, an opportunity that they wanted to, uh, come and share leadership skills with some of our students. Um, the gentleman I've been talking back and forth with would like to come this spring and choose twenty-five to thirty of our, uh, CTE students and do training on leadership, uh, skills, because those are the folks who are going to be out of here for a while and into the real workforce. He's also agreed to do leadership training to the staff. Um, and he's, he's just focused on the CTE staff right now. And the Adventure Group, it's, it's a nonprofit organization, uh, they've been around for a long time, and, uh, one of their goals is to, to help students, um, inspire them to become lifelong learners and also be able to work with them to learn some skills so that when they get out into the real world, they can be productive. Uh, they have a little bit of money, and I'm glad they want to share it with us.
This gentleman with adventure, is this someone that works?
Yeah, he is with adventure, yes. Um, Legacy Towers, uh, came and talked with the, uh, seniors in welding and carpentry. Uh, they've got some spots opening, um, he'd take people now if he could get them, but, uh, they're having, I guess, trouble hiring folks that can show up for work, pass a drug test. Uh, so I told him that, I said, "Well, one good thing is, you know, we keep track of attendance here so I can share that with you." I said, "We drug test because of," uh, I said, "That's a requirement for the state." And, and he was, uh, happy to hear that, so he spent about an hour and came out, uh, spoke with our students, and gave them an idea of where they would start at and how they could work the way of. Um, D.J. Miller is the, uh, the gentleman, and they have the business in salt rock. This is, the next one there is on a podcast, and this is kind of funny because I get an email out of the blue, and this guy, Ben Rowley, had sent me an email. He heard about Lincoln County High School on a plane. Can't remember where he was sitting, he was flying, but he heard about us, so he ended up looking us up, and out of the blue gives me a call. Um, I answered his email back, and then we talked for a little bit. He's a newspaper editor, and he's in Nevada, and he wants to find out what's, how does simulated workplace work in, in a rural setting? So I brought the kids in, and we did a, a podcast with him, and they all shared with, with, with him their, uh, their roles and responsibilities within their company and their business. Um, so it ended, it ended up being a two-part, um, feature with this gentleman, and, uh, I kind of thought that was neat when he was explaining his story, and he was like, "Yeah, I was on a plane, I was flying," and he started talking about, you know, what he does, and then the guy, um, I guess been to, I don't know, maybe West Virginia Department of Ed or something, uh, somehow they ended up finding out about us and then he calls. And so, uh, we did a podcast with him, the kids loved it because they actually got to hear themselves. Uh, the guy had sent that back to us, and, and, and they were happy to share, um, with him, and now he has a, a different view about, uh, rural education in, uh, in West Virginia. The next one is on Apple Education that I mentioned a moment ago. Angela Miller, she's the, uh, K-12 Senior Executive, Account Executive for Apple Education. She brought with her, um, Dr. Kate Himker. She's the National Development Executive for Apple Education. She is actually out of the New York office. They came and, and, and met with me and, and about twenty of our students, and one of their goals is, um, they would like to be able to, um, improve CTE, because the kids were just planning to, uh, because we run a company that each one of our companies operate similar, but in ways different than another one. So they want to work with us and possibly do, uh, one-on-one iPads for all of our CTE students, and they have an, uh, interest in investing in, uh, MacBooks for, uh, our CTE staff members. And they want, um, our students to work with them on creating some, like, apps that would make any CTE program run better and smoother. So I was, I was kind of excited about that. Um, they're actually working with the, the Department of Ed right now and trying to figure out how they can do this. They sent me an invoice of what they thought it would cost. Um, the invoice was two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars. So they have asked the, uh, Department of Education for some money to cover that, and they will cover the other cost. So I'm hoping this works out, I'm curious to see how it plays out, um, because what they looked at doing, possibly the whole building with iPads for everyone. Um, and I didn't get a quote on that, but I'm hoping this turns out to be something, something really good for our students. The deal was, I think, in four years, um, we would trade those back in or do an upgrade, and, and so they wanted the State Department on board to help out down the road. Panther Publishing, um, I mentioned on the first page there about our, our visitors coming from, uh, Stan Watch Academy, and it's a nonprofit organization, it's located in the Taze Valley area, and basically, um, it's run by veterans. And a guy out of the blue calls me, and he says, "Hey, I think I have an opportunity for you." Um, he said, "I, I was talking with Clinton Burge at the Department of Ed, and Clinton says I need to get in touch with you." And, uh, so we sit down and, and we talk, he comes out and visits with me. And, uh, one of the things that he wants to do, and he's been working with our kids to make this happen, is, um, he's teamed with a gentleman from, uh, Marshall University in marketing and business, and he wants to, um, students to think and do an entrepreneur project, which means they come up with a business. And he's been working with them and showing them how, how you start a business, everything from, from the ground up, the first thing you do to where you present this to, to a group. And our kids have been working really hard. When he was telling me, um, about this, my first thing is, you know, "What's it going to cost?" And, uh, and he says, "Well, I've got about seven or eight thousand dollars that I would like to invest in your kids." So I thought, "Well, that's probably going to be good." Well, he had three other school districts that he had been in touch with, and they couldn't get anybody to represent their kids, because he had to have somebody to represent them and somebody to come as a chaperone when they, when they do these, uh, uh, working on these plans and they're going some, you know, going places. Uh, so we were lucky enough to have Ms. Frazier, um, who stepped up to the plate and says, "Yeah, I'll take, you know, this many kids." So we have eight now, and possibly going to have ten, uh, and we started with six, I think it was eight, now we have ten kids that this guy's willing to, to help out. When I talked with him, he said, "Well, since the other schools, uh, are not interested in, you know, working with their students," he said, "What I can do is I have sixteen thousand dollars. I'll take care of your kids." That's great. I was like, you know, "We can probably do this." So he came out and we had his parent night and, and everything. Uh, actually, they're going to do a documentary about, uh, kids in simulated workplace, how they came about, coming up with an idea and starting from scratch and working it through to come up with a business idea and a plan to sell it, um, to folks. So they have an opportunity coming up, um, to go to Colorado and present this idea, uh, to business leaders. And so I'm hoping that this, this carries on to something big for some of these kids.
Will this continue into subsequent years, or is this a one-time opportunity?
We're hoping that this will continue, that's our agreement with, with the gentleman. If things go fine, um, he would definitely like to look at possibly bringing us back on board next year and doing some things with our students as well.
Now, with this, uh, something like this, do you have to run by the state board?
Yeah.
It's up to you and Mr. Make it.
Yeah.
And it's all expenses, like, he's covering the cost of everything, like, for his kids to go to Colorado and...
Everything but the food, I'm going to take care of that, I have, I have money for that.
It's a great opportunity to, you know, experience other students.
On that, on that. Uh, about Ms. Frazier's program, um, she was just recognized, her, uh, recently. Uh, she has the most, uh, Microsoft Office certification, she's the second most in the state. Uh, so they sent her a, a letter thanking her for her hard efforts and the number of students that we had passed through Microsoft Office, um, certification. And we had two students that worked on several projects for the, uh, West Virginia SSAC, um, to do a cover, uh, design for, uh, any areas of soccer, uh, was Hannah Hale, and then Logan Vance, uh, won it at the state level for golf. And these are all Ms. Frazier's kids, uh, that she does a wonderful job with them. Um, I don't know if they're even sure she's young, and she has a good connection with the, with the students, uh, but now they, they're really, uh, go get her punch. Um, on the next topic is, uh, digital festival. Uh, we had an opportunity to send, uh, a variety of our students to Marshall, and, uh, they put on an event that dealt with coding, programming, robotics, and then the last one there is esports. Esports is something new, and, uh, it's, it'll be run through the, uh, Department of Ed, and, and I've been working with them for a little bit over the last, probably, well, since back in the summer. Um, and on the next page, it tells a little bit about esports. Um, esports, um, there's a game out there called, uh, League of Legends, and, um, if you ever remember the, back in the older days, when games first come out, you had the dungeons and the dragons. Um, I don't know if that was on, like, Atari or, uh, on a computer or what.
No, no.
I mean, it's, it's been around for, it's been around for a while. Yeah.
Time was in sixth grade.
So it's, uh, it's, it's similar to that. Um, basically, we have a, uh, come up with a team, uh, five to seven members on a team. Uh, now the state is going to promote this, and the good thing to us is, what's it going to cost us? It's not going to cost a thing. Um, they're going to take care of us. And, uh, the team doesn't have to be all CTE students, and, uh, and we can have more than one team, which is, which is a nice thing. There's no travel involved, because the kids will just use, uh, Mr. Harshburger. It'll be run out through his program, and he's actually going to be the, uh, the coach for this. And, and so he's working with the kids, and, and we've been working with, uh, Tim Elliott, who is over, uh, Project Leadaway and stuff at the state now. Uh, this is going to be like a, a full-blown sport in the twenty-twenty-one school year, and, uh, kids have an opportunity to do uniforms and, and stuff. Um, a couple of meetings I've been to, um, they set up, um, you know, with their, with their game, and there's a computer screen, and the kid's sitting there with a, a forty-inch monitor, you know, sitting in a nice chair, keyboard, and a, you know, it looks like he's got a mouse that, you know, belongs in a race car or something, I mean, it's, these kids just go way out and, and spend a lot of money on things. Uh, but you can also play this sport and just have the basics, uh, which would be just a good computer and, uh, a good mouse and a, and a keyboard and a headset. And the kids will play against other, um, schools throughout the state. And the only time that they don't have to travel or go somewhere would be at the end of the season, would, would be a championship game. Uh, and it's all gaming, it's all online, uh, and they can have, you can have several different games going on at the same time. I think it, it'll be a good thing for our kids to get involved in, because we're always wanting our kids to participate in things at school so they can have that connection. Um, and, and I think we, uh, we were one of the first ones that, uh, already had a team put together and, uh, ready to get.
I've seen this on television.
Yes.
And there's, like, large audiences, people come and watch.
Yes, and we can, we can do that too. Uh, you can set it up and streamline it on a big TV and have it playing while somebody's sitting over here on the computer playing the game. Um, it is, there's, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of money that people have been pouring into this, or, at least over the last ye- year or two. Um, and we've had a couple of connections, uh, of bringing some folks in and actually competed at the, uh, national level with this. So hopefully they'll come in and talk with their kids, and, um, it'll be a good thing for them. It is, it is. Uh, the next one there is Appalachian Regional Council. Um, Dr. Joby Lawrence, she came, uh, she's out of Fairfax, uh, Virginia, she came and visited with us, and, uh, you know, their mission there is to, to innovate and partner and invest to build communities, capacities and strengthen economies and growth in Appalachian area. She sends me an email out of the blue after she come and visited with us, and says she loved the, uh, everything we have going on Lincoln County High School. She'd been to five other different schools, um, but they, she didn't, she didn't connect with the kids like she really connected with our, our students. Um, so upon that, she's asked to, uh, work a little bit, she wants to do a, uh, just a short documentary, um, about what, what we're doing in, in rural education. Uh, she has asked, asked me, um, to come and, and, uh, and Ms. Frye to come to, uh, Florida at the national, uh, conference and do a presentation on what we do at Lincoln County High School. Um, so I told her that we would be glad to come and do that, uh, and so we've been actually working on putting some things together, and, uh, most of this will be paid for through them. Uh, with the help of, of, uh, Mr. King back here, I appreciate, um, him helping us out with a little bit of money to take care of, uh, Jessica's travel, because he will pay for, for part of it, but not the whole thing. Uh, I think it'll be, uh, it'll be a good, a good opportunity. And on the next page there, it was just, uh, when the conference is, I just put a little note in there that, uh, you know, Dr. Dantoni, uh, actually, you know, calls me and, out of the blue, any time she calls me honey, I, I, I know she's wanting me to do something, and she's, she's like, "I've got this opportunity for you to, uh, uh, share what's going on Lincoln County High School with a lot of folks in the, around, uh, around U.S., that's something you'd want to do." And I said, "Well, I, I said, "Yeah," I said, "I'd love to." And she said, "Well, I was hoping you were going to, because I already put you on the agenda for them." So, I'm like, "Okay, we'll run with it." Um, next page there is, uh, an MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Um, we'd applied, um, for a grant with the help of, uh, Mike McFormic, and we're going to do a collaborative effort. We actually won this grant, and we've been working, uh, students have, some of our Ag students with some of, uh, Mr. Harshburger's Project Leadaway students, and with our computer science side of it, and, uh, they have an opportunity to, to design and build something other that hopefully you could market it and sell. Um, their design is an automated high tunnel, and so far they go, the design is about as big as, about as big as, uh, one of these tables. And, uh, this summer, June the nineteenth through the twenty-first, um, they're going to go to MIT and present or showcase their invention. And, uh, he told me the other day, we had to buy like a little, maybe ten thousand dollars for the grant, they've got seven of it left right now, after, uh, spending about three thousand dollars on their mini, um, scale model that they're going to actually take with them and, and use. So this would be a good opportunity for our kids to get out and see things, um, differently than what they would see around here. Um, on the next page there, advanced careers. We've got an opportunity to, uh, take our CTE and combine it with AP and offer some classes. Um, CTE instructors not have to teach the classes, and, uh, basically, it could be anybody that's certified in math or science, they prefer if you have both, um, which we have a gentleman that, that has both, David Aggins. Um, possibly take, take... Possibly take, take this on. And it's something, it's been out there for, for a few years and there's about five or six schools in the state that offer this. It consists of four courses and the students learn to work in teams, think creatively, identify problems, design and test their solution. Their task would include, I looked up a couple of their, their projects that they'd have to do. One is the science of survival, clean up your own water supply, design and build an earthquake-proof shelter. All of this is project-based, so they, they give them an idea, they have to come up with a solution. They have to actually build a model and test their theory and gather data on it. It's critical thinking. And it is a mixture, like I said, between your, your CTE with all your hands-on stuff and your AP, which is your higher-level thinking. And students will actually earn a certificate when they finish all four courses. I'm in the process of working with the State Department and hopefully they will let us offer a embedded science credit or two with these four courses. Because when I looked at it and I shared with them last week, it is, it's very heavily on physics and it's got a huge component of chemistry in it. And, and I would think if the kids, you know, took this over a period of two years, that they could get credit. And if they are looking at that, that's possibly something that'll work out here soon, let me know. But any, any of the students that go through this and think about a career in engineering, for example, this will be the students that will probably end up taking these classes. Because the, the, the level that you have to think at, you kind of have to think outside the box. I requested a grant for fifty thousand dollars. I'm gonna get that grant for fifty thousand dollars to do this with. It needs to be run over four years. We don't have to hire an extra teacher because we're gonna use, one of our science instructors, David Aggins, has graciously volunteered to do this. And the fifty thousand dollars is a couple for me to send him to any type of training that he needs. And then roughly you have forty thousand dollars or a little more to buy all the materials that we need. Some of the stuff we already have because of our science classes. So we might be able to stretch this out money-wise a little bit further than some folks would, they're just starting this, uh, there. If you remember Stan Hopkins. He, he's the seller. He's like, I think you gotta go to an opportunity here, we can, we can do something other for your kid. Hopefully, I'm gonna see how this works out and if this works out to be a good, um, you know, program for our kid is possibly next year, maybe looking at offering health informatics. Because it takes in the, the health side of it. And it's like office work and different, uh, because, uh, in, in, within one big realm, I guess, like the big umbrella. Uh, next page, just some things going on that we've done with the, with our community. LCHS Farms, you know, we did a couple of options, they've been involved with Apple Butter, the Fair, Pumpkin Festival, FFA Week. Sort of started last week, we kind of carried it over this week because we were out a couple of days and the kids just didn't seem to be, you know, fair to them, but covered a few days short. So we extended it through this week for those students to be able to do some of the things that they originally had planned to do. Our Pre-Allen Panther Preschool, which is our ECE program, they're continuing working on our practicum, their portfolios, their ECAN certification. Our Panther Way Healthcare, Ms. Elkins' program, they're back doing their clinicals with St. Mary's. That's been, that's, that has been a wonderful thing for these kids. Every time they go, they come back, they share stories with me. We've had one or two that's changed their minds because they're like, I just don't think that the health field, nursing is gonna be my cup of tea. However, I have seen a couple of other jobs that we've actually got the job shadow and I think I could do that. So that's the, you know, that's the things that we want to see come out of this, just kids know that we're gonna spend all this time in, in a specific area and then not, you know, like it. They did their blood drives and now they're working with the, uh, the nursing home over here, Lincoln Nursing. They're gonna be going up and, and doing some stuff so that they can get their great care certification. So, uh, man has agreed to let us come up and do that. LC Auto, I was telling you about the, the internship though that we go on, they're, they're still, as the kids say, we're still changing all the expecting stickers and doing whatever needs to be done to your vehicle. Our carpentry students, they've been doing some stuff around the school, it's been pretty good. One of the things, um, I'd like to thank Dr. Low back here for helping out. As our kids came and said, you know, Mr. Little, we, our greenhouse has, you know, all the gravel in it. We would like to do something with that and make that the floor smoother, possibly concrete, just to make it a little more accessible for several of our, our peers. And I was like, that'd be something we could possibly look at. Well, I think they took that step further and with the help of Dr. Low, they poured half of the greenhouse closest to the school, moved the gravel out. And they have half of it concrete right now. So it's, it's, it's a big, for them, it's been really exciting because they're doing something other than when they leave, that it's there, but when they come back out, they had a hand in doing that. And for other kids, it's gonna be really exciting for them to be able to get out and back, uh, a lot easier. Panther Publishing, I shared with some stuff, they've been doing a lot of programs and flyers, tickets, you name it. They've been doing anything that they can, you know, put out there and help with the community and sell. Legion of Computers. They've been doing a lot of repairing on some older computers, replacing batteries. They were, been doing some iPads and one of the things that, uh, the kids are really enjoying is some of our computers are like really outdated and old. So instead of throwing them away, they've been refurbishing them and they give them to a few of our students in the building that can't afford a, a computer but need one or would like to have one, so they've been helping out and doing that. LCHS Peacemakers, Brian, Lawrence's class. They did a big thing with fingerprint. And kids really enjoyed that and they've been doing a variety of other things like, uh, 400 Andy, they throwed her off the second floor over there, I don't know how many times, and created crime scene. But now they've, uh,
Who's Andy?
Huh?
Who's Andy?
Andy, it's the dummy. It's the dummy.
Ninth graders.
Ninth grader. So I think I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to get them a new one. I think we've, they've about exhausted that one over the last, almost three years. However, last week I was at the CTE Winter Conference and, uh, I named a security grant for him of ten thousand dollars that should be coming here shortly. And that is to upgrade his simulator. Because we initially had bought it, but a few of the other pieces that we needed were fairly expensive. So I think the, the ten thousand dollars is gonna be just now the opportunity to be able to buy those extra pieces of equipment for our students to use. Straight A fabrication and welding, the CNC machines up and running. They wish they'd had that back when we had the street fair, but I think they're gonna be able to do a lot of good things with it. The kids now are seeing a connection and Jamie's did a wonderful job of being able to sit down with them and look at the math that they need to use with that. And he's actually been doing some, um, looking in, I guess, work, and we've had Larry too, Harshburger, which is familiar with CAD. So he, they've actually teamed up and been doing some, uh, cross curriculum there, I guess, working together and creating, creating things like the state. So now they know how to inlay a, an object and be able to put things over top of it and then cut it out like it's supposed to. But now it's been a real learning curve for them, but as you can see now, I think they've got it down pat. One of the things that we, that the kids wanted to do this year, and we did a treat and meet for Halloween, I think that was a big success. We had a lot of, uh, I don't know, we probably had three or four hundred middle school to grade school students that came by the high school. Each one of the programs set up an area to treat the kids. This was an opportunity for them to get in, the young folks in accounting, because a lot of times if you talk to some other parents that don't have kids at the school, they don't have a clue about what we have going on, nobody's shared anything with them. So this gave an opportunity for them to come in and the kids, you know, treat them and then be able to walk through the building and see some of the things that we have going on and some of the projects. And it was not only just focused with the, with the CTE, it was also for them to look and see other things beyond that. Like some of the classrooms, AP classes, um, some of our student government folks and things that they, I feel, need to know about. On the next page there, we have the adult welding up and running at, at the high school now. Jamie's teaching three classes of that. He's doing the WO one oh three, the WO one hundred and the one oh two. Right now, we currently have eight students that's involved with this and they have class on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays at your school. The, the picture up above that's our CNC plasma cutting. I kind of took a picture and put that in and give you kind of an idea what, how, how that thing operates a little bit. The next picture over is actually Mingo Central students. I've been networking with some of our other counties around us that have some programs that are, are very good. And we've had an opportunity to send some of our kids several places, as well as bringing some other folks from different schools here. They actually came down and spent the biggest part of one day, these two students and, and their instructor, um, with the welding class and helped them understand how that CNC machine operates. And they brought some ideals and things like that down for them. Next page there is our carpentry. They just finished, recently finished a storage shed. They're still doing a lot of stuff at Beach Ford. Those folks love us over there. One thing I'm trying to work with them now at the State Department level is that because the West Virginia Department of Ed was pushing this initiative with the CTE to, um, park renovation, that our students are, have an opportunity to go over and work and do things that hopefully in the end, they could get something out of it, some type of cert- certificate or, uh, you know, connection with the job placement or just anything. But they have worked on finishing the OSHA ten and the CPR recently. I'm saying it took some students up to the Carpenter Union in January to take the PAVE test. And as a result of that, I have a, uh, a couple of feedback from him. I think we actually gotta go back up and have a few more students to, uh, to take the test that maybe missed or something before. But if, if, if our students score a certain level on it, these guys will give them an interview. We had several students that did really well last year and they, they stashed them out and the guys are working. So it's, it's, it's been a good connection with them. Next page, um, it's a greenhouse and as I was saying earlier there, we got about half of it finished. They did the upgrade, uh, we're gonna work on maybe the weather to improve just a little bit. And there's one of the projects for Beach Ford, they learned to do the fire pits, built retaining wall. And they've got some other projects going on. They, they told me that they wanted to come back and pour some concrete as soon as the weather warms up enough for them to get over and do that. And then they've got a couple of other projects going on that they'll be part of as well. Our Vex Robotics, um, they've been competing and doing a, a wonderful job. There's an example of our, uh, Marshall University competition. And then we've been working with the middle schools and bringing the students over, uh, for the robotics team. We actually made the news. And that's, uh, Mr. Jordan there in the background in the yellow. And we are working on developing a, uh, I think we've got some grant money that we're gonna do it. Well, there's a big push for this, for an all-girls robotics team. So we're actually getting ready to start, uh, start with that. Uh, next thing, just some pictures of, uh, you know, our simulated workplaces. Our students wearing their uniforms and doing the things that they need to do. They're, uh, these are the seniors, they're actually at St. Mary's. And on days that they go, they wear their uniforms and their IDs and so forth. The juniors have been, been able to spend some time at the Lincoln Nursing Home. They're working on additional blood drive coming up. They did the, uh, the OSHA ten, the food drive. And on, on the right-hand side of the page there towards the bottom, you see their, uh, their clinicals. They actually dress them up for whatever area they're going into, they make it as, as realistic for them as they can. And that's pretty good. I, I love to hear the stories when they come back. And then up to the top there on the right-hand side is Mingo Central Visit. Sent some students down there because they have a wonderful, um, program with their therapeutic service students. So they went down and brainstormed and shared some ideals and, and the students came back. And I knew when they'd come back it was gonna cost me because they'd actually come in and sit down and say, Mr. Little, we need, we need to talk with you for a few minutes. Anytime they come in and pull up a chair, I'd say it's gonna cost, so, which wasn't too bad, it was just a little bit of pain. I found them a desk and, uh, things that they needed to, to make their area more realistic. Uh, next page is, uh, LCH Peacemakers. They actually got invited to go up to the Minority Expo in Charleston. Put on a, uh, they set up and did an exhibit of their, uh, of their program, uh, along with several other programs we had that actually went up, Project Leadaway went. Ms. Fraser took, uh, some of her students up and they set up for people to come and, and look at. We were out and about, a lot of, a lot of folks have seen us over the, say, the last few years, um, which, which is a good thing. Uh, on the right there is an example of, uh, Jessica doing the, the fingerprinting. This was at the treat and meet. We ordered, um, fingerprinting kits and all Oregon, um, there are kids that showed up for the, uh, the trick or treat. Brian's kids actually sat down with them, did the fingerprinting, put it on a chart, labeled it and gave it to the parents. As a way for them to just put a picture with it, if something ever happened to the kid. So it was kind of giving back and that actually happened to turn out to be a, a fabulous event for them. They were tired at the end, but they really liked it. And they liked it so well, we did it twice. We did it once at the high school when we did the treat and meet and then when they actually treated, uh, Morse Hollow at just your road. Yes, yes. So they were up there in the corner and, uh, and do, and did it again. Tried to catch some of the others, but they, uh, didn't get a chance to when the kids come over to the high school. They worked on the CPR the first day. Brian's got them a police cruiser over there. They use it to do a lot of mock, uh, pull overs, takedowns, um, all the lights and everything worked on. Their simulator, that's been a real big hit. I think it's gonna help with recruiting everybody that comes to season's love, but, and hopefully with the additional ten thousand dollars that, that I perceived there last week, we could do some upgrades to it. And then we had one of our students that actually got on the state superintendent's, um, task force, which was Shay Huda. Shay's actually at the Minority Expo picture, she's a student on the, the far left. And one of the, uh, one of her tasks this year of being on the, on the superintendent's task force was to come up with why students don't come to school and issues. So she, she did some research and talked with her peers and so forth. And then we had several meetings with the state superintendent and she got to share her ideas along with, um, other folks from different CTE, um, either centers or schools around. So that was, that was a big accomplishment for her. And then on the last page there is the, uh, the treat and meet and that's actually, uh, Ms. Elkins' students on the left. They did a theme called Candyland, so they got their kids to come, to come in. One of the things we did was we hand out like an information pamphlet, um, to the parents. And they did everything from our, uh, you know, CTE kids of how to properly wash your hands to safety. And then through GLLM, uh, they shared different ideals and different things that the parents could use just to be, be more healthier. And then they shared different ideals and different things that the parents could use just to be, be more healthier and throughout. And they get candy away. It ended up being a real good evening for us.
My Aunt Emma Chris, when I saw you coming today, I didn't expect this.
Okay, I try to surprise them when I can.
It's a surprise. May I have we, Gunny and Dan, on following up these kids after they graduate?
Yes.
Are we improving?
Yes. Now, this year, we're actually going to have a hundred, I think we're going to have 138 completers this year.
Yeah.
So that number has increased as well. As far as job placement, that's, that's increased. Because one of the things is after the kids graduate, initially the first years, we have to track them, keep in touch with them, see what they're doing. Some of our kids actually have just went directly to work and making, you know, real good money. And one of the students, I've had several of the students come back and, and talk to our other students about, you know, stuff that they did, how that's helped them once they got out in the real world. A lot of the things we do with our simulated workplace, one of our students, Sean, who had left and he went and got a job and he said, Mr. Miller, kick it to them. They started me out $28 an hour, it was welding. He said, as soon as they found out I could do this, this, and this, because he was also in our ACT program, he said, they moved me to $30 an hour. I said, well, that's great, you're doing better than I am. And he started laughing, he said, but no, the story gets better. And I said, what's that, he said, I make $31.50, right now they give me a truck. I said, well, son, I'm proud of you, I give you a pat on the back. And I said, I said, did you upgrade? Because when he was with us, every time you turn around at the end of school, he was working on his truck trying to get started. And he says, well, no, my whole truck still rides. And I said, well, I just kind of wondered if you would upgrade for that. But he had not, so he was saving his money wisely.
I hope they realize one reason they can get a job because their drug is free.
Yes.
How often do you drug test children?
How's it going?
How often do you drug test?
Oh, we've been doing what's the month?
Is that when you, when they get the whole?
They're all together.
Brian, fresh here, Matt.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
Thank you.
Yeah. How many hour days you work?
I stay busy.
Yeah.
I stay busy. You lost a phone call. Actually, I got a phone call today from some, uh, Creve County, wanting to come down and see, come and visit us and see Project Lead the Way and Law Public Safety. I got a call last Friday, some folks down in Kentucky, want to share some stuff with them, so. We're out there, people know who we are now and our kids are being recognized. And the folks out in the workforce know that, so now they're hopefully, they keep contact with us and we can get those kids where they need to be working, because I'd like to retire one day. Have any questions?
Sounds good.
Just the comprehensionness of what you are doing and you all are doing in terms of not just the individual programs, but the interaction between those programs, the promotion, the real world experience these kids are getting, this is phenomenal. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, we have a lot of things going back and forth between, you know, the different classes we've teamed up. You know, like our carpentry, they've been working with the Ag and, you know, Project Lead the Way with the welding. And then Ms. Fraser's kids and things. It's, it's been good and it's changed our, our climate and ability to walk through, it's different from what it used to be. And I think the kids see that we're there for them and to help them. There's a lot of other people that have noticed that too when they can and that's good, it's a good thing.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice job, man.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the next trade on. So have a look, please.
Yeah, move.
Matt, same.
Item A is out of state travel for the following employees. Item B, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings and have completed volunteer orientation. Item C is in agreement with Aaron Gibson to provide transportation services for a Midway Elementary student for the 2018-2019 school year. Item D, out of state trip for Guy Valley Middle School eighth grade students to Gatlinburg, Tennessee, May the 29th through the 31st, 2019, transported by charter bus. Item E, out of state trip for Lynn County High School students to Colorado in Utah for the Stand Watch Young Entrepreneur Expedition. And we need to change the dates. We just got an email from the instructor and it's going to be March the 30th through April the 6th, 2019. Item F, to accept the lowest qualified bid from Fairfax Incorporated totaling $142,100 for dual roof replacement. Mr. Gosney provided you with a letter he addressed to Mr. Priestley and members of the board for you to see. This was a small section of the existing roof over there that wasn't included in the original project. So this will complete the retired roof of dual roof. Other than the gymnasium, according to Mr. Gosney, that's a newer roof and it should be good for a number of years to come, so. And this will finish out the funding that we had left in the SBA account for the six roofing projects from earlier in the year. Item G, according to the provisions of County Policy 8210 School Calendar and Western District Code 18-5-45, the following revisions to the 2018-2019 school calendar are approved as a result of school cancellation for the work stoppage. So March the 22nd and May, or March the 25th were OS days. Those will now become instructional days. And we still have two OS days remaining in the calendar and a professional meeting day that's remaining. So if we were to be out for inclement weather or for whatever reasons, we still have three opportunities to make those days up. And that's all.
Okay. Is that an all yes vote? Who's your finance?
So moved.
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling $111,760.21. Attachment and voice, invoices are available to public view at the county office. The county pension for the fallen retired employees paid out of excess levy. Susan Mishler, she picked the.
Anybody got any questions? Tell me yes.
Yes.
Okay, comments and concerns? Any vote numbers got anything? Mr. Nickit?
The water outage at Ranger Elementary. We've been in close communication with the Nickit, or Branson Nickit PSD as well as the local health department. Trying to formulate, come up with a plan for our students at Ranger. It's my understanding that it may be days, and Sean, you may know more about this than I do right now. But it's my understanding it could be days before the repair is going to be made on that water line. Somewhere either going into the river or coming out or possibly in the river itself. It's not, doesn't sound good at all. We, we kicked around here yesterday, a lot of ideas. We looked at possibly bringing students here, bringing them to Guy Valleys, dividing them up between Hearts, West Hamlin. None of those scenarios really worked for us, you know, they did be a difficult thing to try to pull off. What we're doing is we are going to take a portable 1500 gallon water tank to Ranger Elementary. As a matter of fact, maintenance is working on it now to provide water to the school. And if this all goes according to our plan and the work that, or the conversations that we've had with the health department as well as the state department with child nutrition, if this all works out, we feel like we may be able to have school Thursday. So we've got some, some work to do. We've got to make sure everything works the way we think it's going to. Greg, Gosney, the way you described it to me this morning is that it should function just as if we have the city water coming into the building. We'll tap into the existing line outside and be able to pump water into that building. And then each evening, we'll, we'll take that tank and we're going to set it in the back of our dump truck that we have. And either take it to the Branson PSD location to fill up the tank or it was suggested to us that we take it to West Hamlin. They have a larger line down there to refill the tank. So that is our plan and I wanted to share that with you and, you know, see if you have any questions about what we're going to be doing.
They furnish them drinking water.
Drinking water. Yes, we will provide them with bottled water to drink.
So this water you're putting in the school is a potable? Is it as sanitary, as safe for drinking just for hand washing, commode washing? Cooking will be done with bottled water, et cetera, or?
Yes, that's what we'll be doing. I said that, health department's working with us. Yes.
Now, I missed the part there, what was, how are you going to provide for the toilets and things like that? What did you say?
The water that will come from the tank that we're going to have on site will provide water for commodes, sinks. You know, actually, Courtney Greg will supply the entire school.
I missed the tank part, so have you always looked at the van or got to the point where you look for water or have you painted one?
Yes, we've, we have purchased a tank. I believe by now it's in our possession.
Oh, okay.
Yes, as well as a pump.
Now, you, I don't know, Mr. Curry, I have asked this, once the tank is in place, how does it get filled up?
We will have to transport the tank, our, our folks, our maintenance department will take.
How does it get water in?
Well, we will fill it up at, at West Hamlin, at the water company, West Hamlin, or at.
Okay.
They have.
And you, we just, if, as it needed to be refilled, they just have to take it somewhere and refill it or what?
Yes, we'll fill it every, every day, every evening after the students leave.
Now, what would that entail? Would I think you have to take it down there or you bring it to something to fill with it?
No, we'll have to haul the tank to, to either the Branson Nickit PSD site or the West Hamlin site.
Well, it's going to stay on the truck.
But it's on, we have, you know, we've got this dump truck now that we've had for a couple of years and now it's just going to sit on the back of that truck.
Okay, that sounds good, that's a good plan, I think. Okay, that's all I, I just want to clarify, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You got anything else?
No, that's all I have and I'll let you know.
Of course, now, end of this.
No, we had one last week and then a hose was supposed to go down because of the work stoppage. We had to extend it, so we didn't have any. We'll have one to, to, to.
Nothing further, I'll ask for most of your adjournments. Summons? Mr. Wilkson? Mr. Baker?
Yes.
An all yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next Tuesday.